Our school board meeting, if everyone could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Recognition comments from the chair, so I'm chairing today, I'm the vice chair, Steve is absent today. I just wanted to welcome everybody and I just actually just wanted to comment, I had the privilege of attending the adult education graduation and I'm sure Patrick will probably talk more about that, but just was great to see, it was great to see people coming out who are, you know, just coming back to school, working through, doing a great job and really finding meaning in going back and getting the degree and it was just really great to see. So it was just, you know, just wonderful to see the stuff that's going on in the system, so. Just wanted to remark on that. We need to approve the minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look over the minutes? Yeah, I need a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Anita. All in favor? Okay. Do I have to do it for, I'm sorry, can that cover both? Is everyone cool with that? Because we had two meetings. So that's for both. Adjustments to the agenda. I believe we want to make one adjustment. We want to add within 7.0 for staff report, we're going to make that for Mr. Tim Harkins, gonna speak to us about some changes in the meal plan, proposed changes. So is everyone okay with that? Okay. Let's see, 6.0, so public session, so let me explain how this works, it looks like we got a good crowd here tonight. So there's two public sessions. The first one is to address anything that may be on the agenda itself. There will be another one later for any other topics that anyone from the public may want to comment on. But the first one is if there's anything on the agenda we have today that you have questions on or would like to comment on, that's what this public session is for. And also, just so everyone understands the format, because I know before I was on the board and had attended a lot of meetings, I didn't quite get it myself. When you come up, we certainly are here to acknowledge, to listen, to hear your point of view, any concerns that you may have, and certainly to point you in in the right direction to any officials or anything after the fact. This isn't really a format for debate here, but we're here to listen, we're here to take it all in to make sure that everyone is heard. So we want to make sure of that, but don't take us being quiet as any sign of any, we're just, we're taking it all in and making sure we get all the information and then certainly we want to make sure that as appropriate, we follow up and take it from there. So just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. So is there anything for the first public session with anything on the agenda? Let's go with the staff report, Mr. Harkins. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I mean, your backup, I gave you a proposal from Tim and I think it's been two years now since we recommended a price increase and so you, in your backup, you had, it's 10 cents for breakfast and lunch at both levels, at elementary and at secondary, and that puts us in comparison with other districts in the area and so I'll let Tim speak to that.
Can you hear me?
No.
There you go.
No?
Yep.
So I had spoken to Patrick about the possibility of doing an increase with the price of paid meals. As Patrick said, we have not done an increase in a couple of years. I'm proposing that we look at a dime increase, which would bring our breakfast cost up to $1.55. Our elementary school lunch would be $2.75 and high school lunch would be $2.95. I supplied you with information about what districts in our area are doing. To put it in perspective, again, this would not impact a free student, this would not impact a reduced student, for a paid student, assuming that, you know, we have 180 days per year, school year, so for a single child, for lunch, that would be an additional $18 a year. I can give you more information about how the program's doing, where we stand, but my impetus for this was to get ahead of the state at some point. The state will dictate an increase and I would rather do small incremental increases over time than do a large increase at one point. So with that said, I'll take any questions the board may have.
Anyone have questions? I have one. Is, so you're saying, how often does the state, you're saying that certain increments the state requires or?
Yep. So there is a tool, a formula that I have to fill out each year, it's a price equity tool, they call it, the state calls it, and it's a formula that they look at that based upon what we're currently charging, what our debt is, what the difference between an adult meal and child meal, there's a bunch of factors that go into it. And when I did it a month or so ago, it looked like we were right on the cusp of being obligated to have an increase, but we are not obligated at this time, but I thought I'd get ahead of it, bump things up a dime and, you know, as I said.
Then it's not a huge bump.
So it's not, so we're not looking at a 20, 25, 30 cent increase.
Right.
From one year to the next.
And so the 10 cents is to help out with that formula, but it's an arbitrary amount that you're choosing. I mean, it's not like, okay, this is what's required because of A or B.
No, it's an arbitrary dime. Yep.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? And so this would be an action item, so I need a motion. Alan? Great. And Bill, second. All those in favor? Great. Passes, thank you.
Thanks for your work, Tim.
All right. Yes, yes, sir.
I do have some information just for the, to share with the board. This is just a spreadsheet that we're doing, it gives you a sense of how we're doing for school, just some information to look at.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. All right. Committee reports. 8.1, building project update.
The project continues to go smoothly. We have color and design committee meetings going on every other week for the new high school. We have building committee meeting this Thursday. The crane has arrived, if you happen to go up on the job site, and June 3rd or 4th is when they will put up the first piece of steel for the new high school and vocational center. So it's going as planned for the board and you have tonight pictures from our clerk of the works that's up at the site every day, making sure it's going smoothly and you can see all the different vendors and contractors that are on the site on a daily basis, so continues to go well. We continue to raise money, we're over, we're close to $800,000 now to raise money towards the new school and we're also still selling bricks and theater seats as well to support the new building.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Patrick? All right. Curriculum assessment and instruction update. That's Katie, okay. She's, I think, trying to connect the. Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So for the curriculum and assessment and instructional update, I have two items tonight. You're getting the same thing that's being projected up there, but there were a lot of folks in the audience today, so Damian has put it on the board there for me. So we talked a little bit about this last time. Every year, we're required to go over our federal funds that we receive for Title I, II, and IV and to just make sure the board knows how those funds are being spent. I'm actually happy to report that the last number we were reading up, if you look under FY '20, the Title II amount, that $114,000, was the piece that we did not have the last time I was here. And if you look at the prior year, it actually went up from last year, which is great news. And so I know I said last time that I was worried we might need to do some cutting based on the funds. I'm happy to report that that is actually, yeah, we should probably close that door. Thank you. I'm happy to report that that's not the case. And so the projects that we will be funding for these amounts are the same as in years past, so we actually have no changes currently and it will next year as well. Our Title I projects that we fund with this money are for ed techs and for teachers that focus on math and literacy. Our homeless transportation funds, that we always set some money aside for the taxis and van service that we're required to provide for students. Family engagement funds, that's a requirement of the federal grant, it has to be 1% of your total. So in this case, we total somewhere around $600,000, so it's about, that's usually around $6,000, okay? And finally, we always set a little money aside for our digital programs and supplies. Title II is anything related to those two projects, class size reduction teacher and staff professional development and consultants. The professional development and consultants kind of speak for themselves, it's, you know, sending staff to conferences, it's having our science and literacy folks that have been working with us for years from different places. The class size reduction teacher is, we are allowed to pay for one teacher's salary that helps us keep class sizes small. So for instance, if we were able to get by with, let's say, four classroom teachers for a grade level, but could actually add another to reduce sizes because of some needs in that grade level, we're allowed to do that. And so we fund, that's been the same for many, many years, so that will continue. And then finally, Title IV is actually a newer project. The three years you see there are the only three years we've ever been receiving these funds and there are a lot of different ways you can spend that money, because all of this has requirements. But what we actually just do every year is transfer it into our Title I funds, because our eight staff that fall in the Title I projects are the majority of those funds and to make sure that we can keep everybody from year to year to maintain our staffing, that's what we've been doing with that money. So any questions about that? Again, it's no change from this year, so you heard basically the same thing from me about a year ago. So it's all good news.
Great. Does anyone have any questions on that? Great.
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
And then the only other update I had is last year, the board funded a new initiative for the gifted and talented program. The Gate Days that are for 4th and 5th graders to help them transition to the middle school and also get a chance to form a more tightly knit gifted and talented community and you'll probably also remember that their topic for this year of, it was one day a month where all the students from the elementaries came together to learn about one theme and that was the brain and did a lot of sort of inquiry-based, hands-on projects and research together. And the results are in from the students on how they felt about the program after their first year. So I just wanted to read a couple of the main themes here, which is all good news. Overall, I'm glad I had the opportunity to come to BMS for Gate Days. 100% of the students who went said that they were, which is great. And we know that 4th and 5th graders tell the truth on surveys. Some of my favorite comments in the comments section were, if I could change one thing about Gate Days, what would it be? There were many that asked for it to be longer, they wanted more of them and that they would also like to invite the 3rd graders. So maybe in future years, you know, if this continues to be a success, we might want to think about expanding bus service potentially, because that would allow us to bring 3rd graders as well, which would be a neat thing to think about. And then finally, they were asked for any final comments and there was one student who wrote a comment, "I absolutely love this and I wish, I wish it could be every Tuesday. It was so much fun doing it this year and I can't wait for next year," which is great. So you'll be happy to know that the theme for next year has already been chosen and it is I. So more to come on that soon. And the goal would be to have Judy and Elise and Lawrence to come present next year and possibly some students, some of their projects, since we didn't get a chance to do that this year. So any questions on Gate Days?
Great. Sounds good.
Okay, so thank you for funding the opportunity for students. It's so nice when we get to share some positive feedback from them.
Great.
And that was really, those were my only two updates, but I'm guessing you're going to want me to stay for the next.
Yep, you might as well stay for that with the late start time advisory committee.
Okay. So as the board knows, an advisory committee was formed as per the request of the RSU One community and we have had our first public meeting. It was probably about three weeks ago and all the representatives, the parents, administrators, students, teachers, everybody who was invited was able to basically come, I think we only had one or two people missing, so it was a pretty large group at Lou's Center for Peace and Community. And we basically held a really interesting two-hour session where we had all done some research, read some articles and looked at some TED Talks to think about this idea of should school start later for students. And so we really stuck to some protocols around the research we found to try to weigh the pros and the cons and I would, if I were to summarize what the group thought, and Lou's going to kind of jump in after, it's that they're really supportive of this idea and that there's a lot of research that shows the benefit to students for making sure that they're getting enough sleep and that school start times consider that when they're being chosen. From there, what the committee decided to do is obviously with a possible change in time, if we were going to consider this, there are a lot of logistical considerations that we talked about and basically made a very long list of things to consider, questions we wanted to ask, experts we wanted to consult, other districts who either are in the process or have completed this process in Maine across and across the country that we'd like to talk with. And so that's currently, what we have going is a long to-do list. Our first, the group was interested first in having medical experts come next time and so we'll be having a doctor and some nurses join us for next Tuesday's meeting, which will be from 1:00 to 3:00 again, same time on the 28th, again, at Lou's Center. And so we're looking forward to hearing what research they have to share and other ideas. So anything you want to add, Lou, or questions about that?
No, I think that, that was really good. It was a very positive meeting, I think, you know, people really want to see something happen and like you said, the key, and I think what other school systems are confronting as well, has to do more with the logistics of how do you make it work and what's the optimum, you know, is it half an hour, is it an hour later, you know?
Right.
What can you afford and what can you make it work? So we're going to continue to work on that so we can start to, you know, bring this out to the public and start to get feedback and both educate folks as well as get feedback for what people are thinking.
And in terms of, we also did go over the timeline as an advisory group. As you all know, we're not making a decision as a group, we're just doing the initial research and legwork to then bring that to the board for you all to discuss. And so they thought, based on the meetings we were able to schedule and what we wanted to plan, that hopefully by next winter, we would have some more information for you all to discuss yourselves.
Great. Any questions?
A work in progress.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, yes. All right, thank you so much, Katie.
Thanks.
All right. Sydney, you got any, any info? Nothing big happened this weekend, right?
No, nothing big, nothing big.
Student report.
So we had prom this Saturday and it was really fun, definitely big hit, like we all were there at the library to take pictures for our class pictures and I think it was a pretty good attendance from our seniors and then also like, you know, the other dates that came and I think overall, it was a really fun time. End of year is coming up pretty quick, this is our last full week as seniors.
Oh, wow.
So that's pretty crazy. Other than that, I would say testing schedules have come out for the juniors and the underclassmen, so they're prepping for that pretty hard. Seniors are getting ready for graduation and marching practice, so that's, that's pretty fun. And yeah, just excited for the end of the year, so yeah.
That's great, congratulations, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Just a few things, we were excited to host the Special Olympics at McMahon Complex and we had students from Dyke Newell, Woolwich, and Morse competing in a variety of activities. All went very well and again, I think we will continue to host that for Lincoln County, Saginaw County, and Cumberland County in the future. Teacher Appreciation Day was May 7th, very fortunate to have the staff that we do in RSU One, we're very fortunate to attract the quality applicants that we get every year and I'd like to thank the various organizations from PTAs to different organizations, even parents, community members that came in, brought food, did thoughtful things for our staff, it's really appreciated. Pleased to announce that Morse High School Physical Education teacher Charlie Bingham has been selected as Saginaw County Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to him, there was a nice ceremony up at the State House last week and we've been well represented over the years, that's our fourth teacher to receive this award. Lou mentioned adult education graduation, one of my favorite events of the year, just to see people of all ages deciding why they wanted to go back to school, very heartwarming and also we're excited, it won't be approved until the end of this week by SAD 75, but we are part of the Mary Meeting Adult Education now and we will be hiring a new director at the end of the week that I think will be great for us. Last thing, BMS Celebration of Learning, just a reminder, on May 30th from 10:00 to 1 during the school day here. And that's it.
Okay, thanks. Financial report, Deb.
Can you hear me? Tonight we're talking about the month of April and as of the end of April, we've spent almost $22 million out of our $30 million budget. We have $6.2 million more in salaries and that will, leaves us on target for all of our projections that we've had throughout the year. So everything's going well, there hasn't been anything unexpected pop-up for us, so that's a good thing. Same thing with revenue, we were on target as well. Miscellaneous revenue is down a little bit, but we have a check coming in from unemployment that will close that gap. Gas tax refund happens in June, so that will close that gap. The auditors are here today and they'll be here today and tomorrow, so they're starting the process for the 18, 19 audit and they do preliminary work right now and then they'll come back in October, at the end of October for a week and finish up. Morse High School, as of the end of April, we had spent $13.6 million. Our bond will have a closing at the end of May, so that will be finalized and everything's going well.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, Deb. All right, well, Jen isn't here, she usually does the board goals for us, I don't know if you want to, if we need to go through them or? I mean, we continue to work on, the first goal being the, having to do with the construction, obviously you gave us an update on that. And continue to work on greater public participation as well as with the ACES, I think with a lot of the programming curriculum we've been talking about, as well as actually our next item addresses some of that. And I think we've done a lot with the Schedule B positions already and continue to look at that, so we, I think we're continuing on target. Anybody have any questions on the goals? All right. Next item is second reading of board policy, JLFA, Child Sexual Abuse Prevention and Response. This is an action item, we saw it last month and do you want any comment on it? Do you need to, is everyone clear from last time? Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Bill, and second, anybody? Alan, oh, second. Any other further discussion? All in favor? And it passes, thank you. All right. New business. Patrick, personnel?
First thing is just to report on retirements and like to thank these people for their years of service. First is Kathy Downing, band teacher at Phippsburg for 33 years of service in RSU One. Dan Madden, social studies teacher at Morse, 30 years. And Sue Weston, ed tech at Woolwich, 20 years. From there, we have two resignations. One is Mary Parker, I'd like to thank her for five years as the alternative ed teacher at Morse. And Jennifer Bro, who was our secretary in adult education for three years. And then 12.1C, you have three nominations, I don't know if you want to take them as a group or if you want to take them individually, that's up to you.
I think we can take them as a group unless anyone, okay?
You want me to run through them real quick?
Yeah, just run through them real quick.
So nomination for science teacher at Woolwich Central School is Jamie Schultz and he is, we had 12 applications, we interviewed four people and Jamie is currently a teacher at Brunswick Junior High School right now. For electricity, we had two applications, we interviewed one person, it's a very tough position to fill, because somebody has to be a master electrician and be willing to give up their, usually their private business, private employment, but we found what we feel is a really good one, Landon Hickson, and we're pleased, he has his own business, he is a master electrician, pleased to have him hopefully start with us in August. And then the last position that we're nominating to tonight is first grade at Phippsburg, we had 17 applicants, interviewed five people, and we're pleased to recommend Donna Tardif, who is a teacher in SAD 75 right now and also has been a building principal, but prefers teaching.
Great. So do I have a?
Move approval with the three nominees.
Megan, second. Megan's second, okay. Any further discussion on the nominees? If none, all who approve? Okay, unanimous. That passes, thank you. Thank you, Patrick. 12.2, vote to call district budget meeting and referendum. So this is an action item, do you want to explain anything before I read it, what we're doing here?
It's just a formality to call the district budget meeting, you know, next Tuesday as well as the referendum on June 11th.
Okay, great. So I'll just read it, so we have what it is and then we'll go from there. So the vote to call district budget meeting and referendum, voted that the warrant and notice of election for the regional school unit budget validation referendum presented to the meeting be and is hereby approved and that a regional school unit budget validation referendum be and is hereby called for June 11th, 2019, for the purpose of approving the budget adopted at the regional school unit budget meeting for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Further voted that the form of notice of amounts adopted at budget meeting presented to this meeting be and is hereby approved and that the secretary of the regional school unit is hereby authorized and directed to complete said notice by adding the amounts approved by the voters for each expenditure category and the total school budget summary expenditure amount, all in accordance with the regional school unit budget meeting on May 28th, 2019, and to cause copies of said notice as completed to be delivered to the municipal clerks of each municipality of the regional school unit for posting at the polling places for the June 11th, 2019 Regional School Unit Budget Validation Referendum. And if I can have a motion?
I move to approve what you just said.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Bill's seconds, all right. All approve? And that's unanimous, okay, great. We are good to go with that, thank you. And now we have, this is no action yet, it's a first reading of board policies. And now we have, um, this is no action yet. It's a first reading of Board Policies. Um, IKF, Graduation Requirements, and IKA, Grading System. And so if everyone wants to look it over, um, and if I could just ask Katie, if you just wanted, just give us a very brief rundown, so we know what we're looking at?
The first one is the graduation requirements. Um, so as the board knows, um, this has been something we've been working on all year. It's, um, now been looked at by the Policy Committee, by, um, the high school who it impacts the most, the department chairs, all the teachers, the administrative staff, the VOC staff. Um, and so many, many eyes have been on this. We had to do this because, um, of the state change in the PBL requirements. Um, so the old policy that we had on the books no longer, um, was relevant essentially, um, because of our decision to not want to follow all of the PBL steps that the state was requiring in the, in the now optional law. Okay? So, uh, there's a lot of red here, um, because, uh, the old policy, um, what, basically what we did is we took, there were, there were two policies, if people remember. Sorry if you can follow me. Um, there was one that was just the straight credits policy, and then there was the one old PBL policy, and basically they had to be meshed together.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why it looks like so much has changed and really not much has. The requirements that are in red under the Required Credits section at the top of the first page, um, those we had to include because those are, um, required under, um, graduation law in the state of Maine. Um, so those, the history courses listed are, everybody needs to take those now. Um, and the fact that you do need to take at least one year of lab science is also a new requirement from the state. Okay? Um, I would say if I were to summarize, the biggest change here, um, is that under the old policy, when students took a vocational class at BRCTC, the credit always went to getting a science credit, um, which doesn't always make sense. Um, if you're taking, for instance, um, let's see, one of our classes, um, culinary, for instance. Um, the fact that you would get a science credit for that may or may not make sense. Um, what we were finding is, um, or you were getting elective credits for it. What we were finding is that when students would take their classes at the Vocational Center, sometimes they weren't able, um, to fit it as easily into their, uh, schedule and access the programs because the credits they needed to graduate didn't match, um, the ones they would get if they took, um, their course at VOC. Um, and so essentially, what we've done here is make sure that when students do take classes at our Vocational Center, that the credits more easily match. Um, uh, something that will now be calling, um, uh, sort of an integrated math class, an integrated science class, or an integrated English class. Um, which is really exciting, and actually, um, Julie, who does a lot of work at the state level with many other vocational centers are now taking this and, um, gonna use it as a model because it makes a lot more sense than the old, um, uh, policy that we used to have.
Great.
To make sure that, one, more students are getting access to our vocational programs if that's their choice, and that, two, it's better aligned to the credits they actually deserve based on the class that they took.
Great. Any questions? Um, I just have one. Is the, um, as we're looking at possible changes in our schedule day?
Yes.
Would that affect, I mean, the only thing it could affect would be the elective course number. Is that right?
Yeah, um, it actually, it, because everything would shift potentially later, it actually, um, Julie tells me works better for VOC, potentially.
No, I meant in terms of, we're talking about like scheduling, schedule, like...
Oh, scheduling everything and getting the right credit?
Seven versus...
Yeah, we, we've been considering that the whole time, and so it should be okay.
So that's, that should be okay. Okay, great.
Good question. Good question.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
I'm excited. I think it's gonna be really great for kids, and that's what we should always be trying to do.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, I think this is a nice, happy medium where we're able to do the new things we believed in, and we're, we're already doing well, um, but also stick with the, not having to do the changes we were not as excited about, so that's great.
Great. And the grading system, anything we need to know?
Yeah, I would just say with the grading system, these small changes, um, are what's already happening, so it's just catching the policy up to what parents have already been, um, uh, told about all year since August. So families received letters at the beginning of the school year. They've received, um, some guides through Infinite Campus, and so the changes in here just reflect what's already going home on report cards, and it's sort of more of a check the box to make sure our policy now matches our practice. That's it.
Okay.
Um, and now it's nice that our whole system is aligned, Katie, which it wasn't before.
Great. Any questions? All right, so these are not, we're not, it's not action tonight, so read through it. If you have any questions, let us know, and we'll revisit it next month. Field trip requests. An act, this is, uh, an action item, uh, BRCTC Skills USA Students to compete in the Skills USA National Championships in Kentucky in June. So there's two of them here. I think we can take them together. Any have a motion? And Alan seconds. Bill motions. Um, great. All in favor? All right, thank you. That passes. All right, not too bad on time. Okay, um, now, we get to our next public session, and we have a few people here, so I'm sure there's some people who want to speak to public sessions, so we just ask you, uh, go up to the podium, pick up the mic, and just give us your name and what town you're from, and go right ahead. No, I'll try it.
Wait for it. Wait for it. Speak into it again.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
My name is Abby Bean. I'm a resident of Woolwich. Um, I'm just gonna read from my letter.
Sure.
Um, "Good evening. We are Abby and Chris Bean, Kristen Cahill, Jeremy Tardif, Amber and Jason Karen, Allison and Michael Cosgrove, Christina Phillips, Chris and Melissa Minahan, Mona Gustafson, Leslie Gallant, Carly and Chad Fuller, Kelsey Daigle, Brittany Coffin-Buzzel, Josh and Nikki Wright, Cara and Cameron Kilton. We are parents of 4th grade students at Woolwich Central School, seeking your support for our children and the larger student body of Woolwich. Let us begin by thanking you for listening to our concerns and considering the needs we present to you this evening. We appreciate and enjoy so much about our school, and we present these issues to you in an effort to improve and support Woolwich Central School, not to complain or criticize. The teachers are wonderful, and the staff is likely doing the best they can with the circumstances. We do, however, have very real concerns about our children's well-being and opportunity to learn and thrive. We all have stories, and I will lead with mine to provide you all a firsthand perspective of the challenges in the classroom. My son Sam, a 4th grader, has always loved school, having spent three years at a nearby public school and joining Woolwich this school year. He has grown to hate school and says every day that he does not want to go. His complaints include physical harm, being kicked and punched by another student, and having such a loud, chaotic classroom that he is unable to hear what is expected at times, let alone engage as he would like to. He tells me about students consistently yelling and swearing, blatantly and regularly disrespecting their teacher, et cetera. This experience is not limited to my son. Several other parents' children have the same problems, including a generally disruptive atmosphere in which many children who have always loved school now hate school. When reaching out to understand other families' experiences, I have found that the overwhelming response is that, yes, this is indeed a major concern, keeping some parents up at night and eager for the school year to be over, but no one knows what to do about it. From what we can understand, it sounds like there are too many students with behavior challenges in this 4th grade class that affect the classroom at large. If teachers are putting out fires all day, students are unable to access the attention and instruction they deserve from their willing and competent teachers. Many parents have called, emailed, and met with appropriate staff, including teachers, our principal, Dean of Students, and Superintendent, who respond amicably, but at the end of the day and at the end of this school year, the same problems remain. This leads us to wonder what is going wrong and explore options and pursue tangible steps to make the change we need to make for our and all children's sake. Woolwich is the second-largest school in the district with a multitude of needs spanning nine grades. Woolwich should have the same resources and/or potential resources as our other elementary and middle-grade schools. I do understand that Woolwich may not qualify for the Title I funds that our sister schools do across the river. However, we go so far as to request that the administration try to fund a behavioral interventionist for the year 19, uh, 2019 and '20 within the existing budget, or put the request in for 2020 and '21. We do not believe this is limited to the 4th grade class, but is a broader problem. There are equal concerns for other grades, specifically I've heard from the 1st grade. Other Woolwich families have placed their middle-school students elsewhere due to the same concerns. We are here to advocate for the students in our school. We believe that Woolwich has great potential to be an excellent place for our children to attend school with teachers who are dedicated, passionate, and competent. We believe that we are asking more of our teachers than is possible in the current situation. We want to be a part of the solution, and we are willing to do what we can to help. We don't expect more than what is reasonable, but we do want our children and their classmates to be able to attend school having a relatively calm, safe setting to learn in, and ultimately even love and enjoy learning. We enjoy and appreciate so much about our school and want this to be a place that all of our children can get what they need to succeed. Please work actively with us to make solid, practical changes for the sake of our kids. It would be a real disservice to our children and community to let these concerns go unaddressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for coming forward. Appreciate it. Try it again.
No?
Yeah, there you go.
I know, um, I've met most of you, but to introduce myself, my name is Andrea Dietrich, and I have a current 5th grader at Fisher Mitchell. Um, I appreciate hearing from the Woolwich parents because, uh, we are a Title I school, and we have the same behavior issues. Um, we also don't feel that those behavior issues are addressed for the children that are not in the behavior programs, and therefore our kids who, um, are not getting the extra attention are definitely put by the wayside. Uh, it's, it's difficult to be ready to learn in a classroom when you have kids throwing chairs, tables, whatever the case might be. Um, but what I'm here for tonight is, uh, to talk a little bit more about test scores and the performance of the schools in RSU One. The RSU One School Board section of the RSU One website states that the Board of Directors is charged with overseeing the education of the children in RSU One. According to the National School Board Association, in addition to vision of high expectations for student achievement, effective school boards are both accountability-driven and data-savvy. With that, I am interested in knowing how the school board is addressing the fact that only 26% of Fisher Mitchell School students tested at or above state standards in math, and 36% in English Language Arts. When class sizes are so small, the num, that means the number of students who are meeting expectations are only in the double digits, when there's a couple of hundred students taking the test. If Fisher Mitchell did not see a slight increase in 2016, 2017, by definition, it would be considered a failing school. And I'm only talking about Fisher Mitchell, but it's, it's a problem among RSU One altogether. I'm not a huge proponent of testing. I have, and my, when my daughter was in 3rd grade, I opted out of state testing because I don't believe in teaching to the test. I don't believe in overtesting that our students have. However, I do believe in assessments, and I believe in accountability. And as a public, that is our only means of accountability. I get no homework sent home with my daughter. I asked my daughter's teacher two months ago for every piece of graded work to be sent home with her, and I have yet to see one piece of paper. So if my daughter is not receiving feedback on her own work, how can her schoolwork improve? Overall, as a nation, the, the, we have seen a continued rise in population, but Bath has seen a decrease in population. A continued trend like this only means that home values will decrease, school classes will decrease, and the community as a whole will not thrive. Bath needs to be a place that families with young children want to move to, not move out or not transfer their children out of the school district. With a school rating of only three, there would be a huge concern for a family with young children who only desire equality of education for their child. With the proposed $33 million budget, I would ask you, what company, especially one that is accountable to a group of people such as the public, would allow their business to continue to operate at less than 50%? That 50% number is the number of students who are meeting state expectations in math and English and science. It's my opinion that the, it's time that the RSU One and the school board acknowledge the issues of the low performance and behavior to the citizens of Bath. I don't have the answer for you. I don't know what it is. I think it's a school issue. I think it's a school board issue. I think it's a public issue. It's a citizens of Bath issue, and it's a parent issue. It's also a student issue. But there are many schools across the country that are actually sending out notices to the community saying, "We need your help. This is a community-wide issue." That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
All right, now.
There you go.
Yes, we go. I'm Karen De Silva. I am a Bath resident, and I have, um, two sons, one in Fisher Mitchell and one at, um, BMS, Bath Middle School. Um, I just wanted to, real quick, ask for a show of hands, how many people are parents of kids at RSU One here today? Great, and how many are, um, concerned citizens in Bath? Awesome. All right, um, thank you for showing up, right? Showing up is part of being in the, uh, you know, moving forward and, and getting the conversation done. I wanted to start with just an obvious, and I, I wanna sort of echo what the Woolwich parents are saying. We love our community. We love our school, and this isn't an us versus them situation. We're actually on the same page, right? We're on the same team. And this is a really difficult thing for a parent to have to do, to, to get up and call out on something that they're upset about or feel like they have a concern for. It's, it's frustrating, and it's a hell of a lot easier to just keep your mouth closed and just go with the flow, right? Um, and I know that it's difficult to hear the criticism on the other side, but I do want to make the point that your comfort level, our comfort level, these people's comfort level, isn't the core of this issue. It's the kids. It's our kids. They're the important issue, and this is why we're up here talking. We have two big problems at Fisher Mitchell. The behavior, which ties into exactly what, um, Woolwich parents are describing, and then what is related to the behavior is the low academic performance. How, how can you have... How can you have eighty percent of a class that's also disruptive finishing out the whole curriculum of the school year when so many are behind? How can the poor teachers teach what they need to and get through the year? Even the kids that are at school level, right, grade level, will start the next year behind, right? So for a year and a half, I know you've all heard from me. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I do want to make this point that we're here today because we don't see any action from the school board, from the school, from the district. And we don't understand why. We understand that there's a new curriculum in the budget, which is awesome. I think that's going in the right direction. We're also really excited that there's help for teachers and coaching. But at the end of the day, at least at Fisher Mitchell, we're talking about seven, eight, and nine-year-olds. It's been a while since I've been in school, but whatever happened to just trying to catch a kid up? Like what happened to coming in early and doing a little tutoring? Like why does a third and fourth grade teacher have to go through coaching before we can see a change in our kids? Our third graders last year, which is the fourth graders today, their test scores are what we're talking about, what Andrea talked about, the seventy-five percent, the eighty percent that are behind. We pushed them all into fourth grade and we're about to push them all into fifth grade. Like, how is this acceptable, right? Low test scores are not acceptable to me. Hearing about the bad behavior on buses and how kids are having contests to see who can get thrown off first is not acceptable for me. Having my fourth grader come home and tell me he needs quiet time because it was just so loud and out of control in his class is so not acceptable for me. And I don't understand why this is acceptable for anybody that's in a position where they're working for the school. This is a personal issue. You bet it is. These are our babies, you know? And it should be personal for you too because this is our community. And when you see a group of parents passionate about getting up and talking to people in a small town like Bath where you're neighbors with teachers and administrators, where your businesses are connected to the people that you're talking to about the school system, that you see them on an everyday basis from the basketball court to a recital or a concert, I hope you know what sort of courage it takes for a parent to stand up and say that we love our school. We think there are great people that work there. And we really think that our kids deserve the best.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else? Public session? Well, thank you all for speaking. Appreciate that. We will take all this in and, you know, and be able to get back to folks and, you know, with the stuff that has been going on and get back to you. But thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you all for taking the time to tell us where you're at and where things are. We do very much appreciate it. Thank you. Ready? Next. Okay, so let's go to next meeting dates, locations. District budget meeting Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, here at the school, six o'clock. And of course, the referendum is Tuesday, June eleventh. And what we have on here is next regular board meeting of the twenty-fourth, but we want to ask, can folks make it on the seventeenth instead? June seventeenth? Yeah? Okay, so we're going to make it June seventeenth. So that'll be our next meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? And Alan's second. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and thanks again to the community for coming out.